We decided to purchase our own property. My son is 18, so we didn't want it to commit to another five years of lease. We did all the process with the city and we found this perfect location. There's this topic about the city that is really hard. It's really hard. Well, that was not my experience. I can tell you, I was a little bit nervous to do all the process would permit zoning, building from the beginning to the end. I had a very smooth process. There was a group of people working with the city for my project. Danielle is like a mediator, you know, and she was always making sure then everything was going to be smooth. And Mr. Dell, he took time off his work to meet us here with my contractor to make sure that we were doing things correctly. I don't see that happening in other cities. I never worked with other business owners and Gilbert, Scottsdale, and the way how this city is, it's very particular. They're really good because we're a small community. So we're family at the end of the day, I think, and that's how they treat you. They don't treat you just as a business owner. They care about you. They really care about your business. Like when at the moment you think, oh my God, how stressful. It's at the end of the day, you realize as a business owner, they're trying to protect you, and that's what I'm most grateful for. I got an email from the city a year ago or so, and that kind of motivated me along with our own goals as a family to look into a perfect space for our business, for our vision. We decided to purchase our own property. My son is 18, so we didn't want it to commit to another five years of lease. We did all the process with the city and we found this perfect location. There's this topic about the city that is really hard to deal with them, then they make the process really hard. Well, that was not my experience. I can tell you, I was a little bit nervous to do all the process would permit zoning, building from the beginning to the end. I had a very smooth process. There was a group of people working with the city for my project. Danielle is like a mediator, you know, and she was always making sure then everything was going to be smooth. And Mr. Dell, he took time off his work to meet us here with my contractor to make sure that we were doing things correctly. I don't see that happening in other cities. I never worked with other business owners and Gilbert, Scottsdale, and the way how this city is, it's very particular. They're really good because we're a small community. So we're family at the end of the day, I think, and that's how they treat you. They don't treat you just as a business owner. They care about you. They really care about your business. Like when at the moment you think, oh my God, how stressful. It's at the end of the day, you realize as a business owner, they're trying to protect you, and that's what I'm most grateful for. I got an email from the city a year ago or so, and that kind of motivated me along with our own goals as a family to look into a...
We are going to get started on time tonight. The last few city council meetings, our e-sessions went a little over, and so tonight we get to start on time. We love it. I want to welcome you to this regular city council meeting, April 15, 2025. At this time, I call the meeting to order, and I'd like to invite Pastor Rusty Akers to give the invocation, and the Pledge of Allegiance will follow by Councilmember Marsh. Please rise if you're able.
That's great. Father God, we're just grateful to be here tonight. We're grateful for the freedoms of the God, to live in the country of freedom and God. So we know the freedom is in freedom comes with great, great heavy burdens. And God, I just pray that you would give us the wisdom to carry on.
The duties that we do, whether we're paid or whether we're volunteers, to do them the right way, to listen to you, to think about what the right thing is to do, and then do it. We just ask this in King Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please to agree to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Columbia, one nation, indivisible, liberty, justice, and law.
Thank you very much, Pastor Akers from Community of Hope Church and Councilmember Marsh. Thank you very much. That'll take us to roll call. Vanessa, please.
Councilmember Gettle.
Present.
Councilmember Noor.
Present.
Councilmember Learman.
Here.
Councilmember Marsh.
Here.
Councilmember Manfredi.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wade.
Present.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Vanessa. That'll take us next to Proclamations, Acknowledgements, Awards, and Presentations, of which we have two this evening. And so I'll come down, and first I'd like to invite Councilmember Learman and Parks and Rec Committee Member Adam Leach to join me for the first one. Very good. Thank you. I missed you. I'm sorry. All right. Whereas the aesthetic beauty and wonder of a natural's night light is a shared heritage of all humankind. And whereas the experience of standing under a starry night sky inspires feelings of wonder and awe, encouraging a growing interest in science and nature, particularly among young people and visitors from outside the local community. And whereas light pollution has scientifically established economic and environmental consequences which may result in significant impacts on the ecology and human health of all communities. And whereas 80% of the world's population lives under a dome of light pollution, excessive artificial lighting at night that disrupts natural darkness and may never experience the visual wonder or ecological and health benefits of living under a dark sky. And whereas Arizona hosts 10% of the world's largest telescopes, including the world's largest optical telescope, and many of the world's most revered observations, including the Lowell Observatory, the Smithsonian Astrophysical Observatory, Whipple Observatory, and the University of Arizona's MMT, and large binocular telescope observations, Kitt Peak National Observatory, and the Vatican Observatory. And whereas optical astronomy, which is both hindered and endangered by unfettered light pollution, represents a statewide capital investment of more than 1.3 billion and an annual economic return of over 250 million, including an indirect attachment to more than 150,000 jobs through the aerospace and defense sector. And whereas Dark Sky International, the global recognized authority on light pollution, recognizes International Dark Sky Week to raise awareness of the effects of light pollution, provide free education, resources, and solutions to the public, and encourage the protection and enjoyment of dark skies and responsible outdoor lighting. Now therefore, I Nancy Smith, Mayor of the City of Maricopa, do hereby proclaim the week of April 21st to the 28th, 2025, as International Dark Sky Week, and invite our residents to join me in observing this important week and also in raising awareness of our precious dark sky as a resource. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to invite all of you to join me in participating in an event on April 21st from 8:30 to 9:00 p.m. This is called a Dark Sky Lights Out Event. It's put on by Pinal County. And what we invite you to do with your family is just to turn off your indoor and outdoor lights and sit outside as a family and enjoy the dark night sky. And then I wanted to share just examples of light pollution and what we can do to practice responsible lighting. So there's two examples of light pollution. The first one is excessive brightness causing visual discomfort. And the second one is light trespass, which is light falling where it is not intended or needed. And what we can do about it is to change light fixtures outside your home or business, use timers or motion sensors, talk to your neighbor about light trespass, and protect the dark sky. Shield light source, so keeping the light where it's supposed to go. And then use warm color, lower lumen light bulbs, such as amber lights. And dark sky does not mean no light. So when people talk about safety and we need light for safety, we're not talking about no lights. We're just talking about the appropriate amount of light to keep people safe. And we are proud here in the City of Maricopa that we do practice responsible lighting by shielding parking lot lighting and street lighting. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Did you want to say? Okay, very good. All right. We have a fun second proclamation. I'd like to invite up Jim Venesia and all of the volunteers. We want to recognize some really wonderful volunteers in our community. I think you're going to be impressed by what this group of people does for our community. As I indicated, a wonderful group of people. Okay. Whereas National Volunteer Week has been observed annually since 1974 and recognizes the spirit of volunteerism, community participation, and working together to make a difference. And whereas this year's theme for National Volunteer Week is connecting communities. The nation will gratefully acknowledge the impact that volunteering has in fostering a sense of community, celebrate its power to bring people together, and highlight how volunteering creates enduring and meaningful relationships. And whereas the City of Maricopa wishes to recognize its own public safety and community volunteers who continue to help make it one of the safest and community-supported cities in Arizona. The Volunteers in Police Service, which we know as VIPS, Fire Corps, Community Emergency Response Team, which we know as CERT, Maricopa Library and Cultural Center, and the Maricopa Community Center. And whereas in 2024, 200 volunteers in these five departments contributed to, this is so amazing to me, 16,491 hours to promote public safety and to promote supportive services in the City of Maricopa with a value of, if you had hired people to do that, 16,000 hours, $550,000. That's a half a million dollar savings to the City of Maricopa because we have such wonderful volunteers. Amazing. Whereas it is fitting to honor and recognize our volunteers who give freely of their time and talents, they ask for nothing in return beyond the support of the city and the community they serve. Now therefore, I Nancy Smith, the Mayor of Maricopa, do hereby proclaim the week of April 20th to the 26th, 2025, as Volunteer Appreciation Week. Our city will probably shine a light on the people that inspire others proudly, not probably. Proudly shine a light on the people that inspire others to serve and who help make the City of Maricopa a very special place to live. Let's give them a round of applause. And Jim has a few words he would like to share with them, and then we'll take a picture.
Thank you, Mayor. And yes, I did prepare a few things. Those who know me know that I would do this. But I truly did not want the opportunity to pass when you think this is the first time that we have this proclamation for five groups. And it's Volunteers in Police Service, which is VIPS. It's the library, the community center. We also have CERT and Fire Corps. And when you think about it, this is such a small sampling of the 200 people that volunteered. I told them that we're going to discuss salary increases today, and that's why they're here. And when they heard the 550,000, maybe that's why they're here. But I am honored to be a part of this group. I was Victor 176 back in 2009 with Victim Assistance Program. As I've said before, this is family, and we're all part of this family. Nothing in return except the love of the city and the friendship and the love that they have for one another. But what I'd like to take is just a few minutes just to highlight some of the things. And I was sitting at my desk at police headquarters today, thinking about these five departments and the kind of work that is actually being done that many people don't know about. Angela, you come on over here too. Eddie Rodriguez, come on over. Come on. It's all right. Because there's so much modesty, and I need to be honest, so much modesty. There's so many people that are involved in this and support these five groups and the city that they should be acknowledged. Some of the things, and I'll just read down the list I have. Volunteers support and provide relief for firefighters during fires, assist victims in the aftermath of house fires, make phone calls and schedule home visits with seniors for socialization and also to assure their safety, provide resources and support services information upon request, participate in community outreach projects from the proper installation of child seats to evaluating the need for smoke detectors to developing, as I believe Daniel did, the safety checklists for communities. Attend and support all city-sponsored events, all city-sponsored events. You'll see the booth that's set up. They do the missing child or whatever it's called, but not child watch. What do you call them?
Wristband.
Wristband. Thank you. And information and a bunch of swag representing the city, the city's departments here. They check on homes that requested vacation watches. Educate vehicle owners about city's codes relating to prohibited parking. Deploy speed radar trailers throughout the city to increase driver awareness and promote safer driving habits. Provide support and resources to family members upon death, death notification, and suicide calls. Transport police vehicles to fleet to assure they're maintained and in safe mechanical condition. Deliver books to homebound clients throughout the city. Assist patrons as needed at the Maricopa Library and Cultural Center. Provide a full schedule of programming and events for seniors at the community center. And last but not least, and this is not inclusive by any means, the Volunteers in CERT who undergo hours and hours of training to learn vital disaster response skills, and that includes safety, search and rescue, team organization, and disaster medical operations. And it's really for the one purpose, one purpose with CERT, and that's of assisting the community during emergencies until public safety responders arrive. The work that is done by our volunteers is amazing. It goes underneath the radar. When you see volunteers in whatever uniforms that they have, thank them for their service in all honesty, as we do for police and for firefighters, because they're a necessary piece that gets things done that many people don't know about. But hopefully now there's that glimpse that there's a lot more than meets the eye. And again, I'm proud to be part of this, and I thank you all for what you do.
I'm good over here. Squeezing, squeezing. Thank you, volunteers. Bye, Angela. Thank you. All right, on with some more fun stuff. This is the report from the mayor and councilmembers. Councilmembers, do you have items you'd like to report? Yes, Councilmember Lierman.
Mayor, I just wanted to thank our city staff for all their efforts with the Wild West Music Fest. I went on Friday night, and what I loved seeing the most is just the families together, having fun, quality time together, and enjoying our community as a whole. And so just thank you to our staff for putting on an amazing event. I rode the paddle boats, the pedal boats, sorry, the pedal boats, and it was a lot of fun. I had a great time. On Friday, I went to the Fire and Police Basketball Fundraiser. That was a lot of fun, watching our firefighters and our police officers battle each other for fundraiser. I'm hearing that they are planning a softball and a flag football fundraiser as well. So there will be more to come, and I really encourage you all to come out. It was a great event. And they had little cheerleaders out there and great music and a lot of laughing too. So it was fun. On Saturday, we had a bagpipe recruitment event at the library. And so if anyone is interested in learning how to play the bagpipes of any age and any gender, women are welcome as well. Please, you can see me or Terry Oldfield. We would be happy to assist you in learning more about playing the bagpipes. It was a beautiful Saturday morning, and the bagpipes sounded amazing. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I had.
Thank you, Councilmember Lierman. Councilmember Nor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things tonight. First, I want to thank all of the volunteers who are here today. The programs and the volunteer hours that you provide are just amazing, and I've seen it in action. And it really is an amazing public service, and we really couldn't operate this city without you. And I also want to recognize, I know they're not here, but we also have at least 100 volunteers in our sports programs here with the city. And they are equally valuable, and we thank them as well. So hopefully they are watching. And then I was able to attend the Citizen Leadership Academy. So it was the first meeting of the new session of the Citizen Leadership Academy. And how amazing was it to see there was like 35 people in the room at the library, and we had our youth council there as well, and they're participating. And it was just great to hear the people and why they're here and why they want to participate in the Citizen Leadership Academy. I think we've got some of them in the audience here that I recognize. And it's just a wonderful thing. So if you haven't done Citizen Leadership Academy, I highly encourage you to sign up for the next session. But it was really truly a privilege to be a part of that and to hear from all of our amazing residents. So it's great that the city offers that program. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Nor. Councilmember Gettle.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just one announcement and a follow-up. On May 3rd, so we won't have another council meeting until after that date, but I wanted to make sure everybody had on their calendar, May 3rd, Saturday, the American Legion is holding their annual fundraiser pancake breakfast. And so we'd like to invite the community to come out and have some pancakes and support one of our local veterans group. It'll be there at the Veterans Center, just on Smith, Inc., where the old library used to be, if you know where that's at. It's also a sadness, I wanted to note the passing of another one of Maricopa's great ones. This last week, we lost Paul Shirck. Those of you who are familiar with Paul and his work, he is fabulous, was a fabulous historian for our city and has captured so much of our history and made it so accessible to our community. So if you could, think of him and his family. Add them to your family's prayers for some comfort at this time. And his passing will be, he will be greatly missed. So I just wanted to let us have a moment to think about that and to join in with their family in supporting them at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Gettle. Councilmember Marsh.
Yes, I want to echo what Eric said about Paul Shirck. He was a great man, great friend, great supporter, and great historian. He'll be sorely missed. We're losing people. I've had a busy couple of weeks since the last council meeting. On the 2nd of April, I attended the Central Arizona Project Stakeholders Dinner in Florence. We got briefed on upcoming meetings regarding dividing up the water from the shrinking Colorado River between the Upper Basin and Lower Basin states. In the Upper Basin, Colorado is bad-mouthing Arizona's management of its allocation. They say we're wasting water and should have our allocation reduced. That's completely false. On the 4th, I attended the Pennell Partnership Breakfast Briefing from the major state and county power companies. And power companies are doing a good job. They're looking at renewables, they're looking at more nuclear, modular nuclear, and it's going to be a good next 20, 30 years. On the 4th, 5th, and 6th, we all attended the Wild West Music Festival. I was there all three days with my wife. And all the acts were awesome, and the place was very well managed. I got to chat with Leigh Anne Rhimes about her upcoming concert in my former home county in Vermont. On the 7th, I attended the Pennell Partnership Water Resource Committee, where we track the water bills that are going through the legislature. And we all get our inputs into our legislature about what we want to support or not support. On the 8th, I attended the Pennell County Water Augmentation Authority Board Meeting, tracking Pickwass Bond Bill through the legislature. They want to be able to issue bonds. And on the 8th, I attended and participated in the General Plan Advisory Committee. Rick Williams is doing a fabulous job putting this together. We're going to get a good updated general plan in about 18 months. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Marsh. Councilmember Nor would like to say a couple more words.
Thank you, Mayor. I forgot to add that my designee on the Cultural Affairs and Arts Committee is ready to go retire from the Cultural Affairs and Arts Committee. And so I am looking for somebody to fill that space. It's one Monday a month. It's a great committee. I am also the liaison, so I'm at the meetings as well. And the committee gets to pick the art that goes into the library quarterly. So it's really exciting and participate in lots of different cultural affairs and arts activities across the community. So if you are interested in serving in that capacity, please email me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nor. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. I just want to speak to one issue of a personal note. I have had concerns, and people have expressed concerns about my speaking, and you're not hearing what I'm saying when I'm speaking. So if I'm getting too loud for you, then hopefully I will accomplish the task of getting the message out a little bit better. I think it was a result, a layover from COVID, I'm not sure. But I will make sure that I speak loudly. And if I don't, raise your hand in the back if you can't hear me. I want to also acknowledge the staff and the community for Wild West Day, or Wild West Weekend. It was. It was a lot of fun. It was a lot of fun on Friday, Saturday. I actually didn't attend on Sunday, but my grandson did, and he said he had a good time as well. So it was a great adventure. I'm looking forward to a number count, how many people we had. It was pretty crowded on Friday and Saturday, I must admit. And it was nice being there also to be able to have some time with my fellow councilmembers and their spouses as well. That was a nice thing. Also, the Leadership Academy. I attended the first one, not this last one, but the first one. And it was through my encouragement that the youth council participated in this. We're trying to give the youth council an understanding of what city government is from a real perspective, as opposed to them serving the community as parking lot attendants and things of that nature. So they actually get an understanding of what it means to be on council and part of council. So I'm really happy that the youth council is taking an active interest and is supporting that activities by going and attending. Then I was able to, which was nice, be the guest speaker for the Fire and Police Charitable Basketball Game. The only problem I had really was trying to decide what color t-shirt to wear, whether I wear blue or red. So I wore gray. Keep it simple. But it was nice seeing the guys out there working for it. It was great charity leading edge. It's always a good host for things, I must admit. And so it was a good time. And that's about it. Did you hear me in the back? Was it all right? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Menfretti.
The, nobody mentioned yet, ADOT, I don't much with it. But the 2026-2030 Tentative Program for the Arizona Department of Transportation, five-year transportation facilities construction program is accepting public comments. So please make sure to go to the website and fill it out and let them know that the 347 expansion portion of the 347 is the most important thing to everybody in the city of Maricopa and beyond. So if you live in Hidden Valley, Thunderbird Farms, all around the area, all 90, 95,000, probably 100,000 by now in that entire area, everybody should fill out that form and let them know. Should overwhelm their site, crash it if you need to. But that site needs to have everybody in this room. Just if everybody in this room went there and filled it out, it would be great. It's, I have it on my Facebook page. I'm assuming 347 Facts has it up on their page too. Go there, click on it. It's a Google form. Fill it out so that they know how many people want the 347 expanded. The more and more pressure we put on them, the better the chance that we have it put in the five-year transportation plan. If it's not in the five-year plan this year, it ain't getting done very soon. It's his job. So please make sure to go there and fill out that form. It's very important. And I'm not talking about the letters. You might have sent those letters a few times, right? You might have logged in as your wife or your husband, sent it again. That's fine. Do that. But it's more important to me today to make sure you're filling out the form on the ADOT site for the Tentative Five-Year Transportation Facilities Construction Program Public Comment Form. On this coming Friday, the ADOT Board will be meeting in Benson. I'll be there. I'll be talking. There'll be many of us talking. But there's no way we can get everybody there. So make sure that you're there in spirit by filling out this form. I think I said it enough, right? Fill out the form. The one over there on the website. Bob, what website is it?
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilmember Menfretti. So of course, I want to talk a little bit about the Arizona State Transportation Board, the ADOT work session that happened last Friday. In my opinion, it was phenomenal. I was able to listen to it on their podcast, and they did a phenomenal job. The work study was only, only focused on State Route 347. That tells you anything about how much work is being done to get 347 fully funded on the five-year plan. That says it all, because out of the entire state, the only work session that has been held for years, actually, has been this one on State Route 347. And you could tell, yeah, that's worth it. You could tell by the State Transportation Board members that they have been receiving your letters. They understand the importance. They want it on the five-year plan. And they're trying to figure out how to make that happen. So along with what Councilmember Menfretti said, I gave four easy steps to help for State Route 347 on my mayor page with all of the links. So you don't even have to work hard and go to 347facts.com, although that's wonderful, because that's one of the three elements, is you can go there and find four things. Get informed on State Route 347, and you'll do that at 347facts.com. Fill out the letter to over 100 elected officials that says how important 347 is. Then go to the fourth item, which is the form that Councilmember Menfretti is talking about, and fill out the form for the five-year plan. Very easily summarized for you on my mayor's page. And if you'll do all of that, it'll be phenomenal. Well, let me tell you, at the last State Transportation Board meeting, they announced that after one month, they had received around 400 responses to this survey. And 81% of them came from Maricopa citizens. And we need to keep that up. We need to even raise that number if possible so that it's 81, 85, 90% all come from Maricopa. They're listening, and we need them to hear it loud and clear. So please make sure you do that. And if you'd like, you can watch the next State Transportation Board meeting that will be happening in Benson easily online if you'd like to see how this process works. It's been a lot of work, but gosh, I can feel it. We're like so close. And we just want to pull it over the line. And there are no promises, but we feel like we're really close and the board members are hearing us. Along with that, I attended the Lions Club 10th Anniversary. I love it when nonprofits experience their birthday parties and their anniversary parties, 10 years in the city of Maricopa. And their services are normally focused around eyesight and eyeglasses, and they do a phenomenal job, and they have many other things that they do. And then, if you didn't know, we had our first open house on the half-cent sales tax. And that went really well. People came in not knowing what to expect, saw the boards, asked a bazillion questions. Because it's formulated so that it tells you a story, answers many of your questions. But we have a very knowledgeable staff member at each board so that you can ask questions as you go around the room and get answers to the questions on this proposed half-cent sales tax. There are two more opportunities available. One this Saturday at 10 o'clock at Copper Sky. So that's the next one. Please come out. They are available online, the boards and the ability to ask questions. So if you're curious about that, you can also go to my mayor's page. I provide that information, simple links to get to the boards, to get to where you ask a question, and our staff will answer it online if you're not able to get there. So no excuses. No excuses. There's an ability for everybody to understand what's happening and what's being proposed. And then lastly, well, excuse me, not last. The Maricopa Citizen Leadership Academy was phenomenal. I mean, to see the room packed, 35, 40 people, to see the diversity. And when I say diversity, I'm talking about diversity in age, all the way from 15 up to probably 65, 67, 70? Okay. The diversity in interests, why they were there. They shared with us why they were there. It was amazing to hear their story. The diversity with involvement, some are involved, some are not yet involved but want to get involved. And I promised them when I spoke that anytime someone tells me there's nothing to do in the city of Maricopa, I'm like, oh, I have stuff for you. Just so I can get people busy. So just ask me, and I'll find a place for you. But it was amazing, and I loved it. It was phenomenal to hear their stories and all the information. Lastly, our 2026 Maricopa General Plan update is ongoing, and we're asking all citizens to participate in the general plan survey. This is important to gather your thoughts in terms of how you would like to see the city of Maricopa laid out. You may think that we're well on our way, and we're doing, we're doing fine. But we have so much more to develop. And if you want to be a part of the say in terms of what that looks like, we want you to go to www.mericopagp.com. So general plan, gp.com, maricopagp.com. Click on Virtual Community Workshop Number One. Click on the survey, fill it out. It takes less than 10 minutes, and we'd love to have your opinion. And then lastly, when I heard the news on Paul Shirck, I was so saddened. But I want the family to know, and his family is extended beyond his blood relatives. It goes out to, he has so much of a network here in the city of Maricopa. It goes out to his friends and all his connections. And so I want you all to know that I am praying for all of you and that as the services come near, that we just keep the wonderful thoughts of Paul Shirck in mind. And with that, that's the end of our report from the mayor and city council. I'll turn it over to report from the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Excuse me, members of the council. I just wanted to give you a quick update. I know we've talked a little bit about it before, but we recently started what we call the Traffic Strike Force, which is really meant for us to bring together all of our team that touches traffic or touches transportation within our community and respond as quickly as we can to some of the concerns that pop up in the community. This includes our police department. So as they see accidents within the community, they can bring those to the table and say, well, we saw this accident and think if we tweaked this or we changed this element, that maybe we wouldn't see accidents in the future. We bring obviously our engineers, our construction team, and all of these people together so that we can act quickly on some of the items that are of great importance to our community. One of those items we actually have on the agenda today is the Desert Greens intersection. And I'm sure we'll talk about that a little bit more. But our goal with this strike force is to quickly be able to answer is to quickly be able to, to answer, um, some of the concerns that we have in the community that pop up about traffic or transportation, and then have a way to quickly respond to them. So in our, on our budget next year, we'll put money in there so that we can, uh, if there's an intersection, for example, that pops up that is a concern and all of a sudden meets the warrants for a new traffic signal, we'll be able to go right away and go to design on, on a improvement for that intersection. And really, that's our hope, is to be nimble, to be quick and be able to, uh, respond to the concerns that pop up in the community. Sometimes things take time, whether it's, uh, printing new signs or, or getting engineering plans done, uh, to address some of those concerns, but our goal is to minimize the negative impacts and maximize the positive within the community. So just wanted to share that that's active and moving forward and we'll see great fruits from that here in the near future.
Thank you very much, City Manager Bitter. Okay, that'll move us to the Call to the Public. At this time, I do have one speaker card, let me share a little bit of information about the Call to the Public. The council requests that you express your ideas in three minutes or less and refrain from any personal attacks or derogatory statements about any city employee, fellow citizen, or anyone else, whether in the audience or not. The mayor will limit discussion whether they, whenever they deem such an action appropriate to the proper conduct of the meeting. At the conclusion of an open call to the public, individual members of the council may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the council, may ask staff to review a matter, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss and take legal action on any matters during an open call to the public unless the matter has been properly noticed for discussion and legal action. So given that, we'll move to the one speaker card that I have, and that's Peg Chapados.
Thank you, good evening Mayor, Council. Uh, Peg Chapados, have a couple of things I'd like to discuss with you tonight, the first of which, I'd like to recognize and thank everybody at Leading Edge, the Fraternal Order Police Lodge 78, and the Professional Firefighters of Maricopa, Local 4561, for a very entertaining charity basketball game last Friday. Um, even though the police department prevailed, it was a good game, both sides played well, um, and I was glad that I was a part of it. So I hope to see more things like that in the future. The second item, and I'm hoping I can get through this, is item 8.1. You are, excuse me. You're going to approve a zoning code this evening for the original Smith Family Homestead, which is currently located in the villages of Rancho El Dorado. Um, it's also tied in directly to Paul Schirck. I don't know if anybody knows the history and I'm sorry, but I'm a crier, you guys know that.
It's okay.
Um, we actually sat in the kitchen at the Smith residence and did the Articles of Incorporation for the Historical Society back in 2010. So that property is one of the few places that you as a council and we as a city can preserve and move forward and have it as a landmark of something that is, is so much a part of, of Maricopa. And, you know, at, at the time that the villages was being developed, they said to the Smith family, we will build you a new house anywhere you want, and they said, no, we want to stay here. And it's been part of our community, um, I've attended the P&amp;Z meetings, I've done a call to the public to thank staff and thank the commissioners for their foresight in allowing this zoning code to move forward. I'm hoping tonight that you will approve it because this is important to our city. I think they're going to be good stewards of that property. Um, I, I understand some of the concerns about traffic and what kind of groups are there, but the Historical Society has gone above and beyond in helping to bring Maricopa's story forward and what we do and how we do it. So I think this is going to be a good thing for the community, and I thank you very much for your considerations, and Paul will very much be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chapados. All right, would anyone else from the public like to come forward? Yes, please. State your name.
How you guys doing? My name's Joseph Harvey, I'm the school counselor at Leading Edge.
I'm Mayor Washington, Assistant Principal at Leading Edge.
And at Leading Edge, we're all about the community, so we just want to thank you guys for allowing us, you guys in the back for allowing us to honor you guys, um, you guys for your donations, Ms. Lehman, Ms., Mr. Wade, um, the community coming together for an event that was really good, um, also to invite you guys, if you guys want to come, April 25th. All of the money that was raised is not staying at Leading Edge, it is going back to both organizations. Um, April 25th at 9:30 a.m., we have a check presentation for both organizations that if you guys can be there, we would love if you guys could be there.
Um, I want to say that Maricopa came together to make this possible. I am, I just want to acknowledge all of our sponsors. Um, we had Water &amp; Ice, Joel's Barber Shop, My Maricopa Plumber, Bee Community Church, JT Keys &amp; Locks, the Black Maricopa Chamber of Commerce, Leading Edge PTO, Rui Sports Videos, CAA refs donated their time, the Maricopa Juggernauts were the cheerleaders, and Keep Children Active.
Maricopa ROTC.
Maricopa High School, um, AFJROTC also did the color guard. So it wasn't just us, it took the community coming together to pull this off, and we're grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you, one question, uh, how much did you raise and where is the check presentation going to be?
On 9:30 on the 25th, we're gonna, we have a character council assembly, we're gonna do it within that character council.
At Leading Edge?
Yeah, so our students can see us give the money to, directly right back to you, um, she's pulling up the amount we raised, I want to say it's like 1,400 for police, who won the game, congratulations, um, and six...
$435.75, we couldn't let the fire just go with nothing.
Of course not, no.
So $435.75 will go to the fire.
And we know in the future that you guys want to do dodgeball, uh, softball, flag football, we're open to anything, um, that you guys are willing to allow us to do. Um, it really takes a community to come together to support the people who do everything for us. It makes my job so much easier during Red Ribbon Week when police and fire say yes right away to help teach our students about the dangers of drugs, so it's all about giving back to them.
I love it, thank you. I'm sorry I was out of town, I would have loved to have been there, sounds like a great event. Thank you very much. And, um, I was teasing with Chief Petessi earlier, he and I have got to find a way to beat the police because we had the rocket challenge and the police won, we had the, uh, game and the police won. I'm like, Chief Petessi, we gotta find a way, like, what's going on here? We will, we will, all right. Would anyone else like to come forward? Yes, please.
Well, good evening Mayor and council members and community. Um, I'm here tonight to share some exciting news on behalf of Be Awesome and a subcommittee that we have that's made up of, um, representatives from the teens in the town, uh, college students in Maricopa. And, um, we've been planning a one-of-a-kind, teen-focused event to, um, happen this fall. It's a citywide Pokemon-themed scavenger photo hunt designed to give our teens a safe, fun, and interactive way to connect with the community by turning it into an interactive game board. Um, this is made possible by a generous sponsorship that just came in from Crown Castle, and, um, wanted to thank them and you publicly because I heard you guys put in a good word for us, so thank you. Um, we're also grateful to the community, um, the Community of Hope, who's going to be supporting this effort through their upcoming barbecue rib competition on April 26th. And for every dollar raised, it's going to go directly towards making this event super awesome for our teens. And, um, so come on out on the 26th, $10 gets you five tastings and will support local youth. And, um, we're not done yet, so if you've ever said that there's nothing for teens to do, you can come talk to me in the back, I can show you how you can participate or you can join us, and let's stop complaining and start creating. Thank you.
Love that, thank you very much. Would anyone else like to approach the podium? All right, seeing none, I'll close the Call to the Public, and that will take us to Consent Agenda. Tonight we have Agenda Item 7 dot 1 through 7 dot 3. Council, I would like to pull 7 dot 1 just for a brief explanation, I think it's an interesting topic to just talk about briefly. Um, and that's all, in my opinion, I think we need to talk about, we won't pull it from consent, we'll just ask you to come forward, Keith, and speak about it. Does anyone have anything else? Okay.
Oh, do you just want me to talk about the project?
Well, what I'm interested in, there's been a lot of chatter in terms of left turn, right turn only, left turn and a signal, signal right so close to Porter Road. I'd like you to just explain a little bit about the intention of that light, why we're adding it to the CIP and how it will interact with Porter Road.
Certainly. Um, good evening Mayor, Council, happy to be here to share a little bit more about the, um, traffic signal here at Desert Sign, Desert Greens and Smith Inky. Um, as you know, it has been a challenging intersection for, for years, and as of recently, I've noticed just on the webpage, um, several accidents reported there. Um, because of that, for, for the last several months, we've been looking at that intersection, studying it, and our, our, um, engineering and traffic engineering team, um, hired a consultant to look at a traffic warrant study, and it did meet some warrants there for the traffic signal. So the recommendation was to move forward with the traffic signal as a solution, with the understanding, obviously, it's proximity to the Porter Road signal would require it to be timed and, and synchronized to, to work with that. That's always a challenge, but our traffic engineers will look at that and make sure that the timing is set appropriately to allow, to minimize any, um, any delays in, in that traffic. And we have conducted a traffic timing study along Smith Inky that that'll be incorporated into, so, um, with, with that.
Very good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We will, we will make sure that that is coordinated with the signals.
Yeah, I love the fact that it'll bring about the ability to take a left or a right. I didn't like the idea of having to shut off and only do right turn only, but I was concerned and I saw much of the public was concerned as well regarding having to stop at Porter, then having to stop at this, uh, light, and the, the fact that I had received the information that they're going to be timed so that, that most likely that won't happen. I think it's important for the public to know and understand, so I appreciate that.
And, and just one, we did look at if we were to close off and make it a right-in, right-out only, but the, there is no other accesses within the near vicinity to allow movement to the eastbound direction if you're coming out, so that would have been a, a huge inconvenience for traffic, so this seemed, this became the recommended solution.
Very good, thank you Keith. I have a pesty fly that's up here. Um, Council, any more questions, comments? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve Items 7-1 through 7-3?
So moved.
So moved by Councilmember Manfredi, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Marsh, any additional questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much, that'll take us to regular Agenda Item 8 dot 1, which is an ordinance, and we have a presentation by, oh, Rick Williams. You surprised me, I have two names here and you weren't one of them. But good luck, good, good job.
Well, I'm happily standing in for Lorie this evening.
Okay, very good.
And we get the presentation coming up here in just a second. That awkward silence. Oh, now I've got the fly. There we go. Mayor, council members, uh, it's a pleasure to be here for you this evening. Uh, Rick Williams, Planning Manager for the city here. Um, to speak to you this evening about a city-initiated request, uh, rezone two and a half acres from single-family residents, um, to public institutional for what's better known as the Smith Family Farm. Um, this site is located off of Butterfield Parkway, it's just southeast of Hoag Drive, and if I could just direct your attention to the exhibits on the left, uh, you can see the current, uh, PAD CR3 zoning, uh, in yellow on the left, and the proposed zoning, uh, with the, uh, blue public institutional to the right. Taking a little bit closer look to the, at the site itself, I'm going to start at the northeast corner and work my way kind of southeast, I'm sorry, northwest corner, uh, but that's the main inch, or one of the main entrances off of Butterfield Parkway there to the left, you can see the main house right there in the center. Uh, we've got a circular drive to the right, uh, along Smith Family Farm, uh, and a, a nice little park, uh, just east of that as well. As we've spoken, we're requesting the rezone this, this evening to public institutional for a use as a museum. So we created a, a conceptual development plan, this is in the infancy of it, and, um, ma'am, I'm going to start at the northwest corner again and just kind of work my way to the east, but the, the yellow exhibit you're seeing up there is, is what will become the main entrance to the place. It's going to require some minor modifications into it with respect to widening that entrance a little bit to be able to handle the traffic off of Butterfield. Uh, a gate will be installed there as well. Again, the main house, uh, is to remain, no new structures on sites, however, there will be some ADA, uh, improvements that will be required. Circle in blue to the very top there, uh, we anticipate being able to put four or five parking spaces in there, which we think will adequately, uh, supply the, the, the future museum as itself. Moving to the east a little bit, starting up north there, uh, we're proposing gated access off there, uh, I'm sorry, gated but no access off there. Uh, the red, uh, dot-dot that you see there is, is view fencing along Smith Family Farms, and again, uh, another gated entry at the other part of that, uh, circular driveway. That would be for emergency access only, and then we would continue down to the south with the gated, or with the view fencing. Uh, I also noted that it is possible to put a pedestrian gate there so that if folks and families and kids were at the park, wanted to walk there, they wouldn't have to go around, they'd be able to come through the pedestrian access to that. Speaking a little of the general plan this evening, um, typically we don't read these word for word, but, but there are two objectives and goals that this thing, that this request meets tonight that I think, you know, do warrant it, and first and foremost, it promotes social and cultural ties to the community through public gathering spaces, neighborhood theming and well-connected communities. Boy, does that really speak to strengthening the fabric of communities and moving forward. Not only that, but it preserves the history and culture, and it gives me goosebumps just kind of saying that here, uh, through public facilities and private partnerships in the form of a history museum, auditorium, or cultural center. With respect to the zoning ordinance, it meets all the requirements outlined in Section 18 of the city code, and more importantly, it, this amendment is consistent with what the general plan, uh, reflects in this area. What you see before you now is a chronological order of the steps that we took to meet the public outreach requirements for this. Uh, you'll notice that, uh, at the very bottom of that, there's a March 10th Planning Commission meeting and also a March 24th. I would note at this point that we did have one letter in opposition to this request this evening, and that's contained in the public participation, uh, packet that is included in your packet as well. With respect to the Planning Commission meetings, we did have a meeting on March 10th, conducted a public hearing, and there was a lot of questions about how this was going to operate and, and the impacts that it was going to have on the, on the neighborhood. Uh, one community member spoke in support of the application, we had one that spoke in, uh, opposition to it, and as general, uh, Planning Commission decided they need a little bit more information and understand how it's going to work, so we continued it to the March 24th, uh, meeting, in which we, uh, conducted a second public hearing. Um, we, we brought the conceptual site plan with us, we also had, uh, Quinn Canold from the Community Enrichment Department, uh, speak, we had one member speak in, in support of the request that evening, and ultimately Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, voted unanimously seven to zero to pass on a favorable ruling to y'all this evening. Um, having said that, uh, staff is recommending approval of the case before you this evening, subject to the conditions of approval outlined in your staff report. Ma'am, that does, uh, conclude my presentation, I would like to introduce, uh, Quinn Canold, uh, who would like to say a few words as well. Thank you.
Good evening Mayor and Council, um, I have a few slides for you tonight, uh, as we're looking, we're talking about preserving history, so we thought we'd take the opportunity to, for the benefit of the public, absolutely, share a little bit about the history of how this property came to be with the city and what the vision and intention of it was, and, uh, will be moving forward. So this is the, uh, the home of the John and Mary Lou Smith, who are founding members of the Maricopa community, built in 1956. Um, they were certainly integral to Maricopa's early development and history, as has already been alluded to here tonight, and that after, uh, John's passing late last year, the family had decided to gift the property to the city with the intent that it be preserved, uh, as a historical, um, site and a cultural center. Uh, so that's what we're looking to do, uh, to create some kind of a, a museum. Now, we have a museum already in the city, that's operated by the Historical Society. Now, we have a museum already in the city that's operated by the Historical Society, so I'll talk a little bit about what the vision was of seeing this property used differently, but I just think that's an important kind of backstory to understand that this wasn't a site that the city necessarily selected as this is the optimal site, it was the situation that presented itself, and when we did hear some concerns from the community in that particular area, a lot of it centered around looking for some kind of reassurance that the city was going to be cognizant of the impact on the community, and yes, certainly, and once the Planning and Zoning Commissioners heard that, they were satisfied. So the Smith family, they, they are, as I mentioned, a key part of our history. They donated the, the property, that's where Mike Ingram Heritage Park will be, where the Rotary Pool formerly was. The house is a rare and valuable artifact of Maricopa's history. Unlike larger museums, this home offers a personal and intimate connection to the city's roots. Preserving it helps protect Maricopa's physical history, especially in a town where much has been lost to fires, floods, and time. It was my pleasure to get a chance to work on the historical timeline that's at Heritage Park, and there I learned a lot about how much of our initial history was lost to floods and fires and just time, so finds like this are further and farther between. So what kind of an opportunity do we have here? We're looking to honor the pioneers that trailblazed here in Maricopa. It also gives us a wonderful opportunity for education, to help people understand and connect with their roots, and to provide a platform for community engagement. It serves as a space for storytelling, expanding programs for the Maricopa Historical Society, and strengthening community ties. So again, that the setting is so unique that while we were, while we can teach about history, here we have the opportunity to teach about history where that history took place. It's pretty exciting. So how will we do this? It's kind of alluded to there, but we're going to be partnering with the Maricopa Historical Society. They already have a strong track record of bringing Maricopa's past to life and engaging in meaningful ways. The Historical Society is well-equipped to transform this property into a more immersive historical experience. And if I could go back quickly, you know, talking about, we've brainstormed some of the ideas, something that people can interact with. If you've been to the current museum, it is beautifully curated, it's also very static, so you come and you look, but looking for something you can touch, feel, and experience in this space is what we've challenged the Historical Society to be creative with. So, you know, just examples of panning for gold or playing movies on unique settings, candy stores, these are all just old-timey candy stores, just ideas, and we're looking at inspiration from Old Town San Diego and some of the places here in the valley as well that have been successful with these. So the Historical Society is eager to begin drawing up that plan, just waiting on approval of the rezone. I just wanted to show briefly for those, if anyone hasn't experienced it, where the current museum is, please do take advantage of that. It is wonderful to experience, they are fantastic storytellers, and again, this is an opportunity for you to go and see some of it. We'll be looking for some ways for you to interact with it and create some really memorable experiences with your family that will help us celebrate and connect with Maricopa's unique history. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you very much. Council, I have zero speaker card, so Council, I'll go to you for questions, comments. Yes, Councilmember Marsh?
I certainly support this. You had me at fire, floods, and time.
Thank you. Any additional comments, questions? Yes, Councilmember Lerman?
This is such a beautiful donation to our city, and I was so excited to hear about this. I do have two questions, and I'm sorry, they're back at the other slides, but do you know the capacity for this building? And also, I missed the pedestrian entrance, I'm so sorry, I didn't see that on that slide.
Where pedestrians will enter?
Yeah.
There'll be, all the traffic will be directed towards that main entrance off of Butterfield. Well, there'll be some swing gates off that roundabout that will allow for emergency access if needed, but will be closed generally. Most traffic will be directed through Butterfield, and as Rick mentioned, there would be an opportunity if people in the neighborhood were looking to come through there, that could, they could make their way around there.
Okay, very good.
And then in terms of capacity, the public institution sets some, some standards of making sure that that capacity is not overwhelming, and I believe it's capacity of under fifty people.
Okay.
So yes, this is meant to be small groups that the Historical Society will need to work with, their scheduling to make sure they can get those groups in, but yeah, it's meant to be small groups that are not having a high impact on the, the neighborhood.
That sounds great. I'm really excited to see this when it's all finished.
Great questions. Any additional questions, comments? Given that, do I have a motion? I have so moved by Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Nor. Any additional comments, questions? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. That'll take us to agenda item eight dot two, which is an ordinance twenty-five dash oh four, and Quinn, are you back up on this one? I should have caught you earlier, sorry about that.
So we met during a work session last month and had a wonderful discussion there, talking about some ways that we could look to engage our community more fully, increase transparency, and utilize our committees. So this, this item mends our city code so that we are redirecting our efforts and specifically to re-involve staff with the committees in order to have a staff liaison involved. We believe this will help the committees understand more about what projects the staff are working on, and being able to utilize the committees to gather research and input from our community. Basically turning, you know, our city staff army and into a larger army by having our committee members start to gather some of that input at the ground level, engaging people, talking with them, and specifically targeting groups that we're asking them to. Can you find out, just for an example, what is the best, what is the need we have when it comes to arts, to serving teens, to seniors? Where do we need to start? What are our biggest needs? We have ideas and input on that, but we'd also like to see our committees be useful in gathering that kind of information and feedback. So this would allow us to appoint a staff liaison to work with the three committees that we have in place, and as it's outlined there, and the council got a chance to see this during that work session, but this is a benefit of the, for the public here to be able to see this, for them to be able to obtain feedback, engage with residents and nonprofits and other private sector groups, provide recommendations on courses of action, promote transparency, and certainly to advocate is an aspect that we would love to see our committees re-engage with us for, when they understand what we're doing and are able to understand more about why we're doing it, it makes it easier for them to advocate for that and support it in our community, and when people raise questions, they're there to answer them along with us. And this was another slide that was shown to the council. So our existing committees are the Cultural Affairs Arts and Advisory Committee, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, and Senior Advisory Committee. We already have great vehicles in place, great committees that can help gather some information on areas that we've already identified are very important to our community. So engaging with those members and, you know, council is going to be looking to entice, and I certainly would encourage as well, for members of our community who are looking for that opportunity to have a say in the community, that's part of what drew me to Maricopa, I was like, this is, this is a city where you can make a difference and you can help shape what it becomes and how we serve the needs of the community. The committees are a great way to do that, and we're looking forward to this change.
Very good. Quinn, I want to thank you, the staff, the city manager, because this has been a big outcry since we changed it two years ago, to bring it back to what we had really prior, and I think even enhancing committees even more than what we had prior. I've heard conversations from staff regarding, we could ask the committees this, we could do this with the committees. I mean, the ideas are just pouring out, and when I look at the changes, the red line changes, I'm thinking, the number of words in terms of changes doesn't really meet what the impact is. The meaning behind this change to me is hugely important, and I hope that those that are involved in committees feel the same way, because when we start appointing committee members again this evening, I want my committee members, and I called them today, to know there's a bigger expectation now, and your involvement, the level of involvement is being raised, and do you accept that challenge? And thankfully, all of my appointees are going to accept that challenge, but this is a big change, bringing us back to having staff involved, more input from our committees, more involvement. It's bigger than what it looks like, and it's, I think, I'm excited about it, and I don't want it to go as a, a small point within this meeting. To me, it's huge. One thing that I would like to say, I went and pulled out the Boards Committee and Commissions' Handbook, and I know that we haven't been using that for the last couple of years, at least that's based on my discussions with committee members. I said, do you, are you aware, there's a Boards Committee and Commissions Handbook, and they're not aware of that, and so I really want to bring that back. However, I will say, and I have a copy for each council member to review, because we don't want to talk about it today because it's not agendized in that way, but it's part of the committees. I will say, looking through it, there is a need for change in here, based on our new thinking and our new direction, so, but I would like to see this come back. What it does, I think, is gives committee members direction in terms of how do these committees work, and it allows them to understand the operation of a meeting, but what else is expected of you. I would like to see that come back, if we can make that a part of this evening's meeting in terms of direction to staff. Those are my thoughts. What other thoughts do you have, Council?
Nothing more to add, honestly, but I, I'm grateful for the opportunity to kind of steer the corrected course here and empower our committees to have a little bit more say in, in what our city is involved in, what we're doing, and, and to advocate on our behalf as well. I do want to express my gratitude to those volunteers that have served on our committee so faithfully, some for, for years, almost decades, in these various capacities. It is a commitment, it's, you know, it's a Monday or Tuesday or Wednesday night a month and plus a host of other obligations as they go about their, their business. So just an expression of gratitude for them and for their service, and I'm excited to see this new direction as we move forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Miguel. Councilmember Marsh?
Yes, I think this new vision will re-energize the Senior Advisory Committee and give, give us a real purpose. As council liaison to that committee, I, I find it very fun to work with the group. We, we have some amazing people on that committee, and we don't, we have no seniors who sit there and say, get off my lawn. It's a, it's a real creative group. One of our newer members used to be on a similar committee in the state of Maine, and she's here tonight. She's, she's taking over the secretarial duties on the committee, and I wanted to say thank you, ma'am. So thank, thank you for doing this, Quinn and team, this is, this is really good.
Any additional comments, questions? Yes, Vice Mayor?
I'm, I'm really happy to see this going viral, it just gives me the opportunity just to suggest that the committees are critically important, and the boards are critically important, but most often, people will ask, will call, send an email, how do I get involved in the city government? What is, what is my access to that? And here, here in plain what that access is, to at least coming from the boards and commissions, because you spend time learning and, and participating with those orgs, organizations, those groups, and it gives us an opportunity to say, this is our blueprint, here's our floor plan, let's follow it, see if we can make it happen. Stretch out just a little bit here, hopefully, there will be an opportunity to generate funding, because I know that that is always the issue with all the boards and commissions, and if we can get that resolved and those, those issues are taken care of, I think that will make people a little bit more secure in the ideas that they have, that they want to put forth together, that will, will operate, do the, having those funds, so, but this is great, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Additional comments, questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion? So moved by Councilmember Lerman, seconded by Councilmember Nor. Last chance for questions, comments. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much, Quinn. That time, we'll move to item eight dot three, which is for appointments. This is an opportunity for councilmembers who were elected in November to fill their seats on these committees, for Councilmember Gettle, Councilmember Lerman, Councilmember Marsh, myself, and then others who might have openings, and I've been informed tonight that Councilmember Marsh would like to wait, and Councilmember Lerman would like to wait. I am ready to move forward. Councilmember Gettle, are you ready to move forward?
I am.
Okay, please give us your nominations.
This evening, I will not be making any changes, and so I'd like to renominate Joan Kozar to serve in our Senior Advisory Committee, Ms. Peg Chapados to continue to serve on our Cultural Affairs and Arts Advisory Committee, Devin Pitcher is serving as our member of our Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, and there'll be no change on the commission under Planning and Zoning with Robert Klob, so those will be my nominees.
Very good. Council, do you have any questions for Councilmember Gettle? Okay, I'll go ahead and give you mine. I too am reappointing because many of these commission, committee members actually were new about a year ago. So for my Cultural Affairs and Arts Committee, I'm nominating May McCarthy, who's not able to attend tonight, but she's excited about attending. For Senior Advisory Committee, I am nominating Tony Johnson, who also was not able to be here tonight. For Parks and Rec, Adam Leach, would you please stand? I always like to recognize these, because these are part of the committee members who are volunteers who contribute well over half a million dollars to the city of Maricopa. Thank you very much. Adam actually, he and the chair for the Committee for Parks and Rec took action without even this new process being put in place. Their committee actually went to Maricopa, he dressed up as the Grinch, and they engaged conversation with people in terms of what do you like about Parks and Rec, what do you not like about Parks, did you know there's a Parks and Rec Committee? So that's an example of a committee person that's going to work well on, on these committees, and the type of interaction and engagement we want the committee members to have with our committees. And then my Planning and Zoning is James Singleton, I'm reappointing him. Council, do you have any questions on my appointments, concerns? Are there any empty spots that councilmembers would like to fill this evening? Yes. Oh, okay, Vice Mayor has a vacancy on what committee?
Parks and Recreation.
Very good, and he's not ready to fill that position yet. Okay, very good, we'll come back with that. Okay, seeing none, would I like to have a motion for my nominations and Councilmember Gettle's nominations? So moved by Councilmember Nor, seconded? Seconded. Seconded by Councilmember Marsh. Yes, we do have a comment.
It's important to remember that we just renominated fourteen people, right? No, eleven, twelve people. Of all those folks, ten, whatever it is, right? We just renominated a bunch of folks, there's twenty or thirty, forty people they mentioned in the Leadership Academy coming up. All those folks are going to be wanting to do something, everybody that wants to do something. It's important to remember that although those spots may be taken by somebody, attend those meetings, those meetings are open to the public, attend them, talk to people, figure out what's going on, because when there is a space available, put your application in and get on those committees. They're so important, and it's important to have people that, that gone through the Leadership Academy, it's important to have people that want to get involved in the community, and if by some chance, you can't get on a committee, you're looking for something to do, Be Awesome Youth Coalition, two of them are sitting right here in our, in our office, I mean, in the, in the audience today, Priscilla spoke a little earlier, they are always looking for volunteers. There is the Historical Society always looking for volunteers. So regardless of whether you can get on a committee or not, because it might be full, there are so many opportunities for you to jump in and be part of this community. The Volunteers for the Police Department, the Fire Department, the school district has a volunteer program. Everybody loves free labor, and that's where volunteers are. We give our labor, we give our love to, to whatever it is, so jump in and be involved. Thank you.
Very good. Any, any additional comments, questions? All right, so I have a, a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. That'll take us to agenda item eight dot four, which is a presentation on the Maricopa Fire Medical Annual Report by Chief Petasi.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager, bidder, staff, distinguished guests. It's my honor to stand in front of you again and boast about the accomplishments of the Fire Department over the last twelve months. It's a very busy time in public safety, in both police and fire and emergency management. And one of the benefits of doing a report like this is it forces us to sit down, take a pause, not be strategically looking three, five, and ten years out, like we've talked about before, but where have we, where, where have we been in the last twelve months? What have we accomplished? And it's always refreshing and inspiring to go through this process of compiling this report and presenting it to both you and the community. So, to begin, this is the report. So, we'll start with a little bit of statistics. So, ultimately, what we're seeing is our call volume is increasing. One of the data points that we look very closely at, especially as we gear up for the potential of our certificate of necessity, is obviously our EMS calls. And the trends that we're seeing, and we'll talk about those in a little bit, but one thing I'd like to draw everybody's attention to is our reduction in response times. Now, response times historically has been used as a data point in the fire service, but it's very nuanced. There's certain aspects that we can control, and there's other aspects we can't. Firefighters hate traffic just as much as every resident of Maricopa and arguably the country. But we're seeing is that when the big, large construction projects complete, we are seeing a benefit in the travel time of our apparatus. So, obviously, we're advocating for more improvements to the critical infrastructure and the transportation needs in the community. We are aggressively looking to continue to reduce our response times, and our Operation Section Chief, Assistant Chief Bolinger has done a great job going out, using this data, talking to the crews, and just instilling the fact that we need to be able to control the elements that we have. And that is the amount of hustle it takes when we get our call for service to get to the truck to get in. We can't control traffic, but we can have a human dynamic, and the crews are, are buying in, they're doing really great. And I think part of that's reflective in almost a thirty-second reduction in response times across the board for last year. So, it's, the quicker we can get to help solve the problem, the better the outcomes of our patients, which is great. So, when we look at EMS calls, we are still seeing a trend over the last few years where falls in the sick person call is our predominant call for service. As a result of that, you know, we've put our community risk reduction folks out into the field, and under Daniel's leadership with the Fire Corps volunteers as well, we've really upped how we're presenting our information for health and wellness, especially for the higher-risk populations. We're heavily involved at the, the community center, working on the senior lunches, enjoying those, those outings to not only be in the community, but also help educate. And so, we're really targeting ways to see reductions in, in the areas that we can. And so, we're aggressively targeting that call volume. But again, we're seeing a rise, we anticipate seeing a rise for the years to come. It's just building the analytics to get that Transportation Division up and running once we get approval for it. We're still trending, the majority of the calls are going to be EMS, Emergency Medical, that will never be a surprise. Last year, we were approximately eighty percent Emergency Medical calls, about nineteen and change percent for fire calls, or calls not involving a paramedic or an EMT medical intervention. And again, it's, it's been this, this kind of tiered response to calls for service increasing. We've obviously had some interesting years in there, but we're relatively consistent. Our, our population is relatively consistent, even in 2020, in some of these anomaly years like 2020, 21, we're still kind of trending in that direction. And we anticipate, working with our data analysts and business analysts, that this trend will continue to pace in that direction. So, a lot of focus this year on training. We have a lot of new, young firefighters. We have a lot of firefighters that are entering the retirement phase of their career, so we're really working hard to pass on that institutional knowledge after twenty, thirty years of service. And the biggest thing that we've done this year is change our systems. So, we've had a forty-one percent increase in training reporting, because we made it more practical for a firefighter out in the street to actually report what they're doing and how they're doing it. Integrating more technology, made it much more user-friendly, because all along, we knew our crews were, were active in training, but we weren't capturing that data well. So, under the leadership of Captain Jackson, as Administrator of Captain Training Captain, he's done an unbelievable ability to start capturing this. Great partnerships with our neighbors, Nissan has been exceptional. We've been going down there to work on advanced extrication, or how we cut people from cars during traffic accidents. And so, we're just continuing to raise the bar. One of the advantages we have as a Fire Department is that we have a very proactive and training-aggressive culture. Our crews like to be out there, they like to be training. It's a never, never-settle kind of environment, where we're not a very complacent department, which is a really, really good point, and it allows us to be adaptable for the complexities we're going to face in the future. But very, very proud of, of the crews out there, you know, eight thousand hours is a very good benchmark. We're working to improve that. Next year, we want to hit a target of two hundred and forty hours per firefighter. So, again, we have a young Fire Department, we have a lot of leadership that's entering the retirement phase, so we need to be passing on this institutional knowledge, and we need our younger firefighters to understand that this is what we expect as a department, and they're very eager to get on board with that. So, fire prevention, we had a very significant uptick in building inspections, which we'd been lagging over the, the, you know, previous years. We were able to target that, obviously with coordination with the Police Department and Code Enforcement, but we have a lot of structures in this building, and all of them need annual inspections. And so, we were able to capture most of the commercial buildings this year with a big uptake in, in new development inspections through Rudy's Group and Development Services and Dale, the Building Code Official. But again, when we're approaching this, our mantra has been over the last few years, especially in the fire planning side, what we accept as exceptions today, we have to be willing to live with for the next fifty or sixty years. And so, when we're looking at fire plans and fire plans reviews, when we're going out to do these inspections, we're really making decisions today that's going to impact how we grow for the next fifty years with the lifeline of this building. So, very proud of the fire prevention. As promised last year, we said we were going to get more aggressive with our community outreach, especially targeting the schools. So, Daniel, our Community Risk Reduction Specialist, has done an outstanding job getting our Fire Pals Program back up and running into the schools. Our Fire Corps volunteers, along with our, our line firefighters, were out there supporting this program, had the opportunity to go to a, a couple of the schools as well, and very proud of the fifteen Fire Pals classes that we were able to offer this year, and we're just gaining momentum. As more schools get on board, we're able to, to share that message and have the impact on, on those students through there. Again, we're engaged in the community events and working a lot more with the, at the, with the senior groups and the senior lunches, and, you know, for five dollars, it's one of the best deals in town. I highly encourage everybody to come out, but it's really establishing that. And then, the other thing, and I'll tease it, because it's going to be a highlight in the twenty-five report, our smoke detector program's back. So, a massive, massive study went into bringing that back over the twenty-four-year, and then we're able to roll it out with our, our first watch, which is really going to launch that program. And we have fifty-nine smoke detectors installed in, in houses that didn't have any protection. And so, we, I think we all, all can sleep better at night knowing that our citizens are protected. Fire Corps, again, don't, you know, we can say it a thousand times, and we can never honor them enough or thank them enough, but the volunteers in the Fire Corps are a reflection of Maricopa's finest. So, the ability to come in at eight o'clock in the morning and find a niche of how they want to serve the community, whether it be helping Assistant Chief Grant with the logistics and deploying resources across the department, responding out to the emergency calls at two-thirty in the morning to support the firefighters when they need rehabilitation, when they're dehydrated, they run out of fuel, because they've just done, you know, the equivalent of fifteen CrossFit workouts in twenty minutes. But they need, they need to be healthy as well, and so we have volunteers that wake up at two-thirty in the morning to respond, to help rehabilitate the firefighters that are engaged in these long-duration incidents. And then, there's the special events, in the community events, and, you know, they're rolling out these new programs to capture folks that are, that are at risk. We have an assessment that Daniel created, where you can take an iPad and fill out and answer some pretty basic questions. Do you have an escape plan? Do you have working detectors? And we can run an evaluation and then have a conversation and talk about elements of improvement to, to work on that. And so, we have amazing volunteers across the board in the city, but I can't say enough about the dedication of, of the men and women in the Fire Corps program. It's, it's inspiring. One thing we continue to look on is, is sheltering, in, in how we're providing for folks that have been impacted by disasters and, and house fires. We continue to work with the American Red Cross to provide temporary shelter in place. More commonly, after fires, we have the ability, and Eddie Rodriguez is very involved in the after a fire impacts and effects, as long as, with the Fire Corps and community risk reduction, just to work on how we provide that shelter. And this is a dialogue that we have with George Berger, the Emergency Manager. He's at the other end of the hallway from me in admin, and, and he's heavily involved in trying to figure out what that looks like, what right looks like for this community and, and our nuanced needs. But, you know, we've, we've been very successful with that program, and we'll be there for residents in need. Obviously, a highlight is always promotions. So, these are five of our firefighters that decided to, to promote this year. We have engineers and, one engineer and, and four new captains. And again, it's a testament to the talent that we have in this department. You know, there's a lot coming down the pipe in the years to come, and we have a very robust pool of talent in our department, and we're focused in working on how we develop that talent and how we're setting up our young company officers for success. You know, everybody that's, that's been promoted in the last few years have had direct impacts to how we operate as a Fire Department and care for the community. And it's, uh, it's inspiring to see folks stepping up and, and taking on the new challenges. And at least there are five, or six new hires over the course of 2024, all of them making immediate impacts on the department as well, as well, and doing an outstanding job. And then, just a few spotlight moments. So, it's a big deal for us to get new fire apparatus, and it's been a long time coming for, for some of these, through economic factors and various factors, but we were able to put the order in for five-seventy-two. So, really appreciate that. Eight-hundred-and-seventy-day build time, so I'm not holding my breath for that, but we know it's coming down the pipe. And so, that's an issue that we're having across the board. The Senate actually just launched an investigation today into the fire apparatus manufacturers, but we consistently are seeing delays in fire apparatus from three to five years out. And that's the same for ambulances. Ambulances are roughly twenty-four months out, but it is completely changing the way that we have to do asset replacement plans and just the lead times on these apparatus, not to mention the, the prices is climbing at an exorbitant rate as well. But it's exciting to get our replacement for Fire Engine five-seventy-two out on the east side, so we were able to do that. This year, we took a different administrative approach as well, and, and we all, the divisions, started working pretty diligently on how do we track our performance? How do we know, especially in admin, where we're a little separated from the field, how do we know what we're trying to accomplish is being done? And we're, we're making the right progress with the right priorities in the right direction. So, we, we laid out 2024 key performance indicators. Very common in the business world. We applied the same methodology to every division within the department, and I was extremely proud when I pulled everybody together and we went through the list. And, you know, it's a living document, but at the end of the year, we had a big meeting, and, and we hit over eighty percent of them. We're currently working on our new KPIs. We're going to do it on a fiscal year this year, but they were, some of them were aggressive, and we were able to dedicate the time, energy, and resources where our priorities needed to be, and so I'm very proud of our staff for that. And then, we had a graduate from our paramedic program. So, firefighter Nathi graduated from paramedic program again. You know, hats off, kudos to him, six-month, very difficult program, but he made an investment in, in the community by the advanced paramedic skills, which is great. So, a little bit of a sneak peek, because we are in April, and so we've had a lot of good things coming down the pipe, and you'll hear a lot about it in the next year's recap. But so far this year, we've met the city thrust that you've put out for the Fire Department in Thrust four-point-four, which was application of a CON. Very proud about that, and amazing teamwork that went into that. We brought back our Chaplain program. So, Chaplain Akers is back as our official department chaplain. We're bringing back our Honor Guard. Our Honor Guard had our first opportunity to perform at the twentieth anniversary banquet that we held in March, so they're very excited about that. The fire detector program is back. We'll be able to have a really good report for you, for that, coming in the fall. And it's, again, we've been celebrating all year, but it's the twenty years of, of full-time service for the community, and, and that's just been a theme of kind of looking back at our history, where we've been, and more importantly, the direction that we're going under your leadership and the executive team's leadership and, and the community's support. So, with that, you know, short, short and brief, concise, but I'm here to answer any questions you may have on our 2024. And again, just very proud of every firefighter and staff member that we have in this department, and, you know, it's just, it's a great opportunity to, to thank them, thank you, and thank the community for the support that we've had as a department over the years.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Council, what comments, questions? Yes, Councilman Gettle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief Patassie, thank you so very much for a great, very productive year. Would you just express my gratitude to the men and women there in your department for amazing service that they provide to our community? Every, every year, as we sit and listen to these amazing reports, I know there's so many stories behind these numbers. There's so many lives that, that have been greatly impacted by the, the quality of service that your men and women bring to their home in times of need, in times of distress, and, we just, I can't thank you and, and your team enough for what you offer to our city. So, thank you for your good work, and I look forward to this next year, and, and you're making great strides. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Gettle. Councilman Marsh.
Chief, congratulations on, on another year of positive progress and growth in the department. I'm especially impressed with the Smoke Detector Program. I, I look forward to that being very successful. I'm not sure most of the people in the city know, know that smoke detectors die after about ten years, and they're not, they're not going to save your life. You need to replace them. My wife's been working on that for quite a while, as you know, and she keeps the pressure on me, to keep the pressure on you. So, thank you very much for doing that.
We're making progress.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Marsh. Councilmember Nor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief Patassie, for that great summary of the last year, and thank you for your leadership of our Fire Department. And I echo Councilmember Gettle's comments about taking back our thanks to the men and women, the boots on the ground, who are doing this day in and day out, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. They never stop, they're always there when we need them, and we truly appreciate that. So, please tell them thank you.
Absolutely, they deserve it. Thank you.
Councilman Lerman.
Thank you very much, Chief. I was able to attend the award ceremony, and one of the things that I noticed among many is just, you guys are a family, and there's so much pride for each other, and also just pride in serving our community. And so, that room was just filled with brotherhood and family and pride, and I just want to thank you so much for serving our community. It's, we're so grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lerman. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. It was an excellent presentation and positive, which is a wonderful thing. We want to stay on a positive level. I just want to acknowledge Jimmy Harada as well, and James Jimmy Harada, and his upcoming retirement, upcoming retirement.
Yeah.
And not to cast shade, throw shade on anybody, he's one guy that I really, really appreciated in your department. He was always available, always helpful, and I know that hopefully, he was setting a good example, and we'll have that same caliber of individual coming through, and under his tutelage, and yours as well. So, thank you very much, and you could pass my regards on to Jimmy.
Will do. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Manfred.
Thanks, Chief. Great presentation. One of the, one of the things that I talk to people about all the time when they ask me about the Fire Department is the fact that we're going to have a brain drain over the next few years, because when you're in, in business for twenty years and you're in government, that usually means you're going to start losing people soon. And a lot of our guys are going to be retiring and moving on, so it's great that we have the training that we have, because passing on that knowledge is, is stuff you're never going to learn in academy and stuff like that, but it's that institutional knowledge. So, thank you so much for making sure that's a priority. And especially over the next couple of years, when we'll be bringing in tons of new people, simply because- simply because we'll be bringing on the ambulance corps soon. Well, maybe in twenty-four months after we order them, right? But we'll be bringing on the ambulance, we'll need more paramedics and EMS and stuff like that. So the ability for us to keep that training going, a hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, a couple of things. I'm really impressed with the growth in getting out to the schools. That was fantastic to see. I know you talked really high about it last year as this is one of your goals. Love it that you did it and followed through. And I know the schools appreciate it as well. Love the hours of training growth as well. That's super huge to me. I know how important safety is just within the department, much more even out in our public. But to have that training is phenomenal. I totally support that. One of my biggest blessings, and I'm sure the rest of council could say this as well, is when I receive an email or a phone call. And I'm, this kind of like almost makes me want to cry. Someone telling me how an experience with one of our firefighters or an experience with one of our police officers just made their day. Simple things over a lost cat. I mean, it's amazing in terms of how the littlest things. And you guys care so much. And I love getting those emails. I forward them on to you or Chief Goodman and make sure I forward them on to the city manager. Such a blessing. Makes my day. Makes all of the other emails that aren't so nice.
Balances it out.
It balances it out. Another thing, coming from the business world, the KPIs. I actually would love to see your matrix. I'm a big believer in KPIs. And I really appreciate the fact that you've incorporated that into your department. It means a lot because it gives people things to strive for. It gives them an idea of how to measure themselves in regards to what's expected, how to exceed expectations. I love it. When you talk about the fire alarm, our fire prevention program, you're talking about the entire city. And I'm comparing that to what just happened a couple of weeks ago where some of your firefighters volunteered to go into homes with a nonprofit. So a little bit different of a program. But I wanted to bring it up because your firefighters went with this nonprofit and a bunch of volunteers, including our fire volunteers, and installed alarm, fire alarms to many homes in the Heritage District that didn't have them. And they put one at every bedroom and at the entry hallway to homes that really need them that didn't have them. And one impressive aspect was, I was so impressed with the, they showed me the fire alarm that's intended for deaf and hard of hearing. And I was super impressed that we had these to install in an area where we know we have a lot of elderly folks who are possibly deaf and hard of hearing. And now they have the security of being able to, the way they work is they put the element right on their table next to their bed and it vibrates. Because if they're asleep and they're deaf, they're not going to hear it, right? But it vibrates. And then it also sends out strobe lights if they're awake or, so saving lives. So that's a great program too. And I thank your firefighters for being a part of that. And then even bringing the fire alarm program back. A lot to be really proud of. I love when you come and give us an annual report. Love when the police come and give us our annual report because there's so much misinformation. And I really like that I can point to these presentations and give people the factual information that helps them understand they're in a safe environment. I really appreciate that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And then I think it needs to be stated on record that we do an after-action review on every incident and we're conducting one on this basketball game. So we're going to have to, we're looking at two key things coming up this year. So the Rocket.
Rocket, we're going to beat them.
We got crushed by Chief Goodman and, you know, type A personalities, it doesn't settle well. And then the basketball game. So we're going to come up with a plan. We, again, we're very strategic at deployment and we're long-term thinkers. So hopefully, we have better news next year from the fire side. So we'll see what we can do about it.
I appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your support again. Yourself, the executive team in the cities is incredible partners to have as we're working to navigate the growth over the next ten years. So thank you so much for your time.
Very good. Thank you for a great presentation. All right, that brings us to the end of our meeting tonight. I will close the city council meeting. Thank you very much.